All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our council work session for Monday, June 26th. Going to jump in, we got two items at least listed on our agenda. The levy update and Vision Zero update. Mr. Manager, you want to jump in here?
Yeah, just real briefly, we've asked for the update on all things levy associated. So I've asked Steve to come present on that and then we'll talk about Vision Zero. Steve?
All right. Thank you so much, Scott. Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Steve Neber. I'm city engineer and resident of Des Moines. I've got a whole team with me from our Public Works and Engineering Department, who have been working on the levy program. I think folks have probably, if you've been downtown, you've been seeing that work going on right along the river. So this is an update as well as the Corps has come up with a new process, a new standard, which actually I think is a good one. And so Patrick is going to help me help talk about that. He and some of our other team members have spent a lot of time with the Corps, learning, working through that process and learning that process. So that's kind of the point of today's conversation. So again, given a kind of a background, how we got here, an overview of our project and the status of where we're at, as well as that new process called the semi-quantitative risk analysis with the Corps of Engineers, what it could do with for our project and looking at the budget and then how we move forward. Okay? So the focus of the levy alterations program is on eight and three-quarter miles of what is known as the DM1, 2, and 3 levies, as well as almost seven miles of what is known as the Southeast Des Moines Levy. DM1, 2, and 3 are considered a City of Des Moines levies that we still need to go through the Corps for approval for any alterations of those levy. The Southeast Des Moines Levy is actually a federal US Army Corps of Engineers maintained levy. However, it's of interest to us because, one, it protects a lot of our city, including the wastewater treatment plant. And also it is hydrologically connected to DM1. So in other words, if that levy fails, they're basically, if you can almost look at it as one levy. So if it fails along any one of those locations, you know, the areas behind those levies would be at risk. And so we've had some substantial floods in our city. And so, you know, where we're at right now is in 2009, we entered into a provisionally accredited levy agreement with FEMA. And what that is, is the levy systems, these levy systems that we're talking about, don't meet the current FEMA standards. And so, but FEMA recognizes that we have a plan and we've been working that and executing that plan. And so if you look on our, on the FEMA floodplain maps, you'll see that those are either, you know, sometimes usually secluded or, you know, is one word. And so FEMA is still recognizing those levies that they exist today, meaning that they're not going to, they're not, they're not putting the area, you know, behind the levies in the special flood hazard area in the hundred-year floodplain because they recognize the levies are there because we have a plan. If we did nothing and we told FEMA we're going to do nothing, there would be a risk that they would say, well, you know what? These levies don't meet our standards. We don't recognize them. But they recognize all the efforts that the city has done, to recognize that the city has a plan and the city's executing the plan. So that's why they are listed that way on the floodplain maps today. In November of 2010, the Corps of Engineers released their flow frequency study, which did show higher flows in our rivers. And so we responded as a city to that. We've, right away, starting in 2011, started undertaking planning efforts to address that. And so, and in 2017 through 18, we worked with the Corps and got programmatic approvals for our plan. Because it's such a massive project, we wanted to get that overall programmatic approval before we move forward with all these efforts that we've been doing with the pump stations and the levy improvements. And so the Corps approved that program. And then in 2019, we started construction on the levy alterations. And so there's been quite a bit of work done on that already to date. This is a map showing what we're talking about here. So this is the, you can see, they call them the downtown levies, DM1, 2, and 3. And then again, as I mentioned before, if you look at the green levy, DM1 levy, that is basically continuous with the Southeast Des Moines levy. So they are hydrologically connected. And when I talk about FEMA standards, FEMA uses the federal standards. It's called Title 44, Chapter 1, Section 6510. Those are what lists the standards and when FEMA uses to accredit levy systems. So, and basically what it is, a professional engineer needs to certify that the levies meet those standards and then FEMA credits them. So those standards include things like freeboard. In general, FEMA standard is three feet above the, what's known as the hundred-year storm or the 1% annual exceedance storm. And so it's a three feet of freeboard. So the top of the levy is at least three feet above that. And generally, except for when we get close to bridges, then it actually goes up to four feet. So freeboard is kind of one of the more common ones. There's also standards on closures. When we talk about closures, if we look out the window right here, our Simon Estes Amphitheater, if you notice, you can walk between the actual seats that are along that wall. That's actually a flood wall. And if you notice, you can obviously walk between sections of those walls. And so what we've already built in there is stop log closure so that when the water levels come up to a certain stage, our Public Works team members can actually bring out what's known as stop logs and they slide these, you know, devices in the slots and basically kind of build, fill in the wall, if you will. So that's an example of a closure. Other closures are at bridges. For example, at the Iowa Interstate Railroad Bridge here, we've already, we've built floodgates, a floodgate and a stop log closure at that bridge as well. And so these have all been huge improvements. And because before, to be honest, our Public Works team in a lot of these locations had to hire, get contractors to help and bring in large amounts of fill to basically fill in these closures. Well, now we've got more and improved closures that are gates and so they're much quicker to operate. So that's a huge flood mitigation risk benefit and, I mean, huge safety benefit there that's been, that's been improved as we've been working along here. So, and bank protection, you know, the actual protection of the levy itself from scouring, using things like riprap. And then when we talk about foundation stability and settlement, you know, that's kind of the geotechnical aspects of the levy. I'll show a graphic on the next slide that'll show that. And then there's operational plans and criteria, maintenance plans and criteria. We're blessed, we've got an awesome team in our Public Works team that's focused on that, led by, obviously led by Jonathan Gano and Adam Smith, but also Chad Christensen, our flood protection engineer, who do an incredible job. They work closely with the Corps on keeping those standards up to date and operating that. And so, and so the goals of our project here, number one, reduce flood risk. Number two, obviously, we want to meet the FEMA standards that we talked about that the levies didn't, don't meet today. And so we want to also stay in that federal rehabilitation inspection program under Public Law 8499. That's a program that's administered by the Corps of Engineers in terms of response to floods that happen. And then we also want to improve the drainage, interior drainage system. And when I talk about interior drainage system, we've done a lot of awesome improvements with that, protecting our neighborhoods, you know, on the south side by, through Beechy Flats, we put in a new large storm sewer, brand-new pump station on the north side of the river. You know, just kind of on the south side of East Village, we've built a nice big detention basin with a brand-new pump station, done improvements in there. And so, you know, when the river's up high, you know, we need the pump stations to be able to pump the water over out in the river, right? So if the river's high and we have a rain event behind the levy system, we need to get that water out of there. That's what we're talking about when we talk about interior drainage. So here's a graphic that I use when we talk about the 6510 FEMA certification requirements, right? So we talked about the freeboard, the height of the levy. You can see there's the three-foot minimum over the hundred-year storm or 1% annual exceedance storm. When we talk about, you know, stability on the front side, you see the scour protection. So again, that's the river running along the levy and scouring away along the front foundation of the levy. You know, the Des Moines River and Raccoon River sediment moves like you wouldn't believe. I think, you know, I've talked to, heard stories when we had, when divers would go down to inspect the bridges, they would inspect them and they would see, at one point, you know, you couldn't even see some of the footings and another point, the sediment's way down. So sediment really moves in this river. And so that's when we talk about scour protection. And when we talk about other geotechnical aspects of the levy, there's groundwater, water is moving underneath the levy systems. So we've got to make sure that the levy systems are solid enough as a whole and on the backside so that the water doesn't come up behind the levy and cause the levy to actually overturn and fail that way. And so it's a geotechnical aspect. There's a number of different things we use to treat that, from seepage blankets. So in other words, we have enough fill and clay liners in the backside to keep the water from pumping up behind the levy and causing that overturn, to things like seepage mitigation trenches, where we actually have a trench that drains the water to a pump station and pumps it out. So it relieves the pressure, so there's not pressure under the levy that causes it to turn and overturn. So, so again, a lot of aspects to make sure these levies are stable and meet those standards. Just that photo on the right, I think folks, if they've, you know, been in Principal Park lately, they'll notice that that, there's been some changes around there. Again, the levy system, you could see the levy going around Principal Park. And again, it used to be where we had to bring in, have contractors and folks bring in large amounts of fill to fill in those gaps, you know, the entrances, the parking lot of Principal Park. Now we actually have a closure structure that's made that a much quicker process, you know, which is a wonderful mitigation aspect and reducing risk greatly. So again, the goal is to address FEMA accreditation, mitigate flood risk, and that's been an effort that we've got as a plan that's through multiple phases of projects. This is kind of a highlight of the levy plan going A through H. And so you can see there, basically, we're working from the upstream and making our way downstream. And we talk about A, again, this is another photo of one of those closures at Principal Park, the stop log closure that's been installed. Phase A is complete. That is, that is from the confluence of the river upstream, upstream of Des Moines River. We've made improvements all along this system right here out of our window. That work is complete from flood walls to levy raises. If you notice, there was a raise that had to be done right in front of Brown Camp Lofts there. So that levy is higher, that was made higher in the past couple of years, a few years. And so just kind of an example of a raise there. And again, that's on top of all the closures that have been done with the railroads and, or the railroad bridge, as well as the Simon Estes Amphitheater flood walls in Principal Park. Phase B is racing forward. This one's about 85% complete. This would be from essentially like the Third Street Bridge, Second, Third Street Bridge, all the way upstream Raccoon River. And this one, again, has had a lot of raises, a pretty significant raise, as well as a lot of stability improvements on the front end with riprap. This one, we also, we did make a change in the scope to make the levy, the levy top wider. We have, our team has a future multi-use trail planned from the Fifth Street Bridge to the Chris and Marcy Coleman Bridge, you know, to, so the levy's been designed to accommodate that future 10-foot trail. So, and that one, again, like I mentioned, is about 85% complete. And there's just a cool aerial photo, I think, you know, from our Parks and Recreation Team and their drone of some of the work that's going. You know, that's looking at about, the drone is above Southwest 7th, looking back toward the Fifth Street Bridge. And you can see Principal Park there in the background. Phase C is the one that's ramping up. That one was awarded in December. And so that work has started here. And that work is the one that right, is obviously been, you know, been coordinated with the Icon Water Trails Project right at Scott Avenue. A substantial amount of work and staging that's been gone into coordinating that effort since they pretty much overlap. And so again, this one, a lot of the work here, there's a lot of geotechnical work. So when we did a lot, extensive analysis along that levy, we did find geotechnical concerns on that one. So there's a lot of seepage mitigation trenches, from seepage mitigation trenches and cutoff walls to basically improve the geotechnical aspect of that levy, as well as there is, there is, there are raises along that levy as well. And then D through H, those have been working in the kind of the design phases. They're generally 30% complete with design. And so D, you know, would be the next phase. And so, and then as well as, as you know, portions of G in red overlap the Southeast Connector Project. So we've already got that, that work coordinated in the design. So about 4,000 feet of G is being, is already within the Southeast Connector Project and coordinated with the roadway design as well and the bridge that's been done there. And so this is where we would talk about, you know, looking at, you know, kind of more of a risk-based design approach. And we'll talk about that a little bit here. Or Patrick could talk a little bit about that here before. And so just again, when we talk about the design criteria for the levy projects, we've got, currently, we've been working on one meeting FEMA accreditation. That was the criteria show with the graphic before. The Corps also has, which is known as the 90% Assurance Modeling Standard. So in other words, in terms of hydraulic models with a 90% certainty on those, of the confidence of those models. When we get in an area of downtown like we're in and there's bridges, bridges can cause some uncertainty in the hydraulic modeling. And so that, so we want, so our designs for the downtown levies not only meet and exceed the FEMA standards, but they also meet this Corps standard for the 90% assurance model. So we're meeting both standards. And then we've also made the decision to provide a six-inch buffer above the FEMA standard. So again, the levy designs have been for, to meet not only both standards, but also provide a six-inch buffer above both those standards. So it's, so there is some, we're hitting two standards and then providing a little bit of buffer in there as well. And so, so we've been really just focusing on checking those boxes. So Patrick and Chad team have been spending time with the Corps on a new process, which again, I think is a good one, looking more of a risk approach. And so Patrick, is this where you were taking over?
Yeah, awesome, yeah.
So I'm going to turn it over to Patrick Bean, our Clean Water Administrator.
Honorable Mayor, City Council. So yeah, I've got to talk a little about the risk assessment that the Corps is starting to use. They actually brought this process online in about 2021. And this is a new process for them and it's a new process for us, except we've already gone through it once. The Birdland levy was assessed using this exact process. And it's a way to better understand all the risks of a levy system, how it can fail. And overtop, the underseepage, all those different things that we talked about in that one graphic that Steve talked about. And it's looking at what is the most likely one of those. And that's going to be the controlling risk that we're really going to say, this is what we need to meet. And the rest of them, like Steve said, you're checking the boxes in all of those design categories. Well, those may not even be the primary risk of the failure of the levy. So trying to take a look at this, trying to shift it away a little bit more from checking those boxes to potentially some operational and maintenance issues that we may be able to handle versus just building taller and wider levies every time. We're really optimizing the work, looking at, you know, the baseline condition of what the levy is right now and saying, where do we really need to spend and focus our time and effort? And the one thing we really wanted to make sure we could do, the Corps and FEMA have both agreed that this is a way to get through FEMA accreditation going through this process. And this is a new process for the Corps, but it seems to be spreading a lot more. And I anticipate in the future, as of right now, it's kind of a pick one or the other. You can go either route. I anticipate this will probably be the primary record in the future once they have more experience with it. So what is the SQRA process, just the risk process? Basically, the Corps pulls together a large cadre of their internal experts. Their geotechnical folks, their structural folks, their modeling folks. And we go through a couple, couple week-long workshops, going through, looking at, what information do we currently have, looking at past flood events, looking at, you know, any issues we may have had in the past, compiling that all together and providing, you know, a baseline assessment of what is the current levy right now. And then also looking at the proposed, you know, levy design assessment. And so we are making a recommendation to bring forth an SQRA process, again, to council tonight for a total cost of $572,000. The first one is that baseline levy condition assessment. That is a 50/50 cost share with the Corps. Total cost to the city for that one's about $377,000. And the proposed levy design assessment, that one is wholly on the city for a cost of $194,000. The timeline to compete, complete these risk assessments is 12 to 18 months. And one of the good things with this process, as we get into it, there is going to be several checkpoints along the way as we're doing it. So anytime we get into this, if the process isn't going the way we want it to, we can always go back to prescriptive approach. And at that point, we can tell the Corps, we want to stop the process right now and any remaining funds that had not been expended, get returned to the city. So this would be applied to phases D through H. A, B, and C are already designed and either under construction or built already. So it's really just those remaining five phases that we're looking at. And so the SQRA process, one, it manages risk a little bit differently, but it also has potential for some cost savings. And so the risk-based approach versus the prescriptive could potentially reduce the need for, you know, raising some of the, you know, some of those levy raises that are built into the current design. And then potentially some of the geotechnical issues Steve talked about. One, that slope stability, the riprap on the riverside. And then also that underseepage and relief that may be required. And there's a lot of that in some of these areas that, that may or may not be an actual risk that needs to be mitigated once we get in and really start drilling in on it. And so the savings associated with this would be potential, you know, reduction in the levy height required, not reduction, but maybe we're not have to raise it as much. Reduction in the riprap required and then reduction in those, you know, that seepage blanket or those large thick clay layers on the backside of the levies. And what that, what this risk assessment really does is it levels the standard to the most likely point of failure in the levy system. So it's really honing in on what is the highest risk. So we decided we're going to go down this process. We got our consultants re-engaged and they went and looked at the remaining phases, where might we impact cost? And for all of them, there is some potential cost savings, some significantly more than others. The first table you're looking at there is those five phases and the potential reduction in fill required to raise the levy above where it's at now. Potential cost savings, about $1.8 million for all those five phases. And then the second table is the geotechnical and seepage cost reduction. And that's where we have some much larger potential savings of about $7.3 million for a total potential savings of about 9.1. So there are, these are some big numbers we're potentially talking about. Just because we go through the process doesn't mean we're guaranteed any of this. This is just based off of what we currently know right now before we get into that deeper dive process with the Corps. Yes?
Sand boils.
Yes.
I know that, that we've had some over in the Birdland. And after much back and forth, FEMA came back and said, no, it's just fine. I still have concerns about that. How, how do we address that here?
So that would be one of those, those seepage mitigation processes we've looked at. And that was part of that, the Birdland SQRA that we did. And really what happened there was the, the risk of overtopping during a flood event was much higher than the sand boil or that underseepage that occurs. And so there are other ways to mitigate that, the sand boils or underseepage. And really what it is, is we're continuing to do continuous monitoring from a maintenance perspective, you know, walking the levies when we're seeing them. You're actually able to, you know, sandbag around them, protect them so they don't expand where they're from, where they're at there into more areas and potentially damage the backside of the levy. The other thing is, we were going through on that, the, the way to mitigate that is to come in with seepage wells or trench drains. Those actually introduce new risk. By doing that, you're kind of trading one risk for the other. So you're really not gaining a whole lot by going through and going through that process and mitigating those through the recommended methods that the Corps had. So it's one of those that, yes, they're always there. Every levy, every levy has that potential risk. But going through that assessment, the Corps and FEMA both agreed that the risk of that was low enough that we didn't need to go through that process, spend the millions and millions of dollars to mitigate something which would add new risk into the overall system.
Do you agree with that?
Yes. Is that satisfied? Because I was going to say, the simple way I took that from the Birdland was that it's, it's more likely to be overtopped before it would fail. This is the way I've looked at it.
That is correct.
So the levy will not fail.
Well, were you here in 2008?
I was not.
Well, we were walking it a lot. We were doing all the things you're talking about. We even put two feet worth of sandbags up on there. And it started leaking and then it totally breached and blew out. I am continuing to be concerned about it. And that's why we had the discussion with the Corps of Engineers and talked to them about what's going on. And they seemed to question how it was put together and designed. And because of that underseepage and all that, I continue to worry about that, not only on that levy, but a number of the others, especially given the history of coal mines around all this and the stuff that we ought to be thinking about and worrying about. Because, man, I'm telling you, we had thousands of Des Moines residents down there filling sandbags and helping the Corps and our National Guard place them. And boy, I tell you, a lot of broken hearts when that whole thing blew out and there was nothing anybody could do. We did an immediate quick cleanup and tried to get people back to normal life. But the protection is what these levies are all about. And I appreciate the opportunity to get... And I appreciate the opportunity to get, um, potential savings, but I'm telling you, I'm concerned about how we protect our citizens, our property, our businesses moving forward. And that's obviously what this is all about.
Yep.
And I think 93, it, it, it was a sand boil or something. I mean, it didn't go over the top. It, it, the levy failed in 93.
Yeah, so let me make clear, that's exactly why that Burdland levy was rebuilt, based on new science, based on new technology.
And based on a lot of help from our people in Washington.
Yes, yes. And the entire system has been inspected and everything you've seen here is showing the latest and best information on, on levees, and they're inspected every year as well. So we have very different levees than we used to.
Different levees and different standards that we're maintaining them to. So it is much, there's a lot more scrutiny that goes into them now than there was back in, you know, 93 and even in 2008. So we, we're trying to stay ahead of those as best as we possibly can. Ultimately, you, you can't build infrastructure to protect against every event, but we're definitely following the standards that the core and FEMA have laid out. So I, I would agree with, with Burdland has, the risk there is significantly lower than when it failed.
I'm curious to, to just understand a little better the climate resiliency piece of this, um, because my understanding is part of this change, I mean, that was because of the frequency of flow, which, which is impacted by climate projections, right?
Correct.
Um, and, and we're, we're essentially building to that level. Uh, what if those projections are too low? I mean, what, what are we potentially looking at if, uh, if FEMA revises this and, and the, the best available information now is that this is too low? What, what kind of, I mean, are we gonna have to go through this entire exercise again if, if that, if that assessment changes in a few years?
So that is part of the process we're going through right now. We are building to the new standard, and then that's what Steve was talking about, that six inch overbuild, so that we have some buffer in there. If they come back in the future, reanalyze the rip, you know, reanalyze the flows, reanalyze those flood levels, we have some, some built-in buffer, so we're not gonna have to come back and do this again in the near future. Is it possible 10, 20, 30 years down the road, we might have to again? Maybe. But our, our goal is to add some level of buffer in there so that we have some to absorb that if they come back and, you know, raise it a couple inches in the future due to, you know, the more frequent, more intense storms that seem to be happening.
Yeah. And how many, remind me how many inches they, they raised it this last time? I mean, cause we, we, we were meeting, it previously met FEMA standards, and then they, they raised it based on new information, right?
It depends on where we're at on, I don't know, what the highest, it was close to a foot in some areas.
So, so, yeah, originally, originally, the original plan was to, to build that FEMA standard, and so then some of the raises in downtown were more like six inches to a foot, but we, we made the decision to include a buffer as well as meet the core's 90% assurance model. So really, we've, we've been having raises in the aspects of more like two and a half to three feet. So there is, what's been done and been, being done in downtown and what's been done, it, were higher, definitely higher elevations than, so, so we did, it did increase substantially, you know.
So you've raised it higher, two and a half feet higher than what?
What it was before. Or the original plan in a lot of these areas, the raises downtown were more like six inches to a foot.
That's what they recommended.
That, that was, uh, that was to meet FEMA's standard.
Right.
And then we made the decision to, to not only meet FEMA standard, but add the six inch buffer and meet another standard the core had, which is a 90% assurance modeling. And that, that, so instead of raising it six inches to a foot, we raised in some areas that raises were more like two and a half feet, uh, so there was, yeah.
And, and I know, I think you covered it, but just so I have an understanding, the 90% assurance model, like what, what's that standard going to from a height perspective?
So, so, uh, so again, the, kind of, the FEMA standards is the free board above the, the, uh, uh, what's considered the 100-year flood event. The 90% assurance model is when there's more uncertainty in the modeling, and a lot of that uncertainty is like in areas where we are downtown, where there's a whole bunch of bridges, that, then that impacts, they, they run, uh, I don't even know how many models they run when they do this stuff. And so, so different models will show different things, and so this is, this is accommodating the uncertainty in those models, uh, that, that are running hydraulics to, so it, so it results, when we're downtown, when there's a lot of bridges, we, we had to build higher for the un, the uncertainty. When we get down further by Southeast Des Moines, there's, there's not really any bridges down there. So the models are little, are, are known to be more precise and not as much uncertainty. So then the, really the FEMA standard would kick in down there. That, that, that makes sense, I don't know.
And Steve, when a levy section is completed and it's been, um, certified, if that's the right word, by FEMA, does that impact, um, insurance rates that a, either a homeowner or business would expect?
So in, in this case, um, yeah, so when we get the project done, we'll, we'll certify the, uh, the levy and FEMA will credit the levy. And then the area, what's known as area protected by levy, those folks behind there would not, not need to, not be forced to buy, uh, flood insurance. Uh, however, uh, because, because FEMA knows about our plan, because we've been working with them, and because we've been acting on it, the, the flood insurance rate maps still show the levees as secluded or, uh, uh, I'm having a brain freeze on the other term they use, but, but they're recognized to the point where today, uh, behind the levees, they are not mandated to buy flood insurance. If we did nothing and we told FEMA we're gonna do nothing, then there would be a substantial risk that FEMA would say, you know what, those levees don't meet our standards, we're not recognizing them on our maps. And so then, then folks would be required to mandate to buy.
Okay. So it is as though with each phase, um, let's see, we're on phase C, um, that, that those property owners are blessed, but downstream because it's not completed.
Correct. Yep, that's correct. Yeah. It, it's the whole, because it's, it's hydraulically connected, we, we, we've gotta implement the whole project. So now again, the, the flood risks are drastically reduced, uh, because, because of all the improvement, like I said, the closure improvements and the raises downtown. But, you know, as we work our way downstream, there still is, you know, we still gotta make those improvements downstream to, um, so that water doesn't.
Okay.
You know?
They're not paying higher, uh, protection flood insurance today, though.
They're not mandated.
Be, because we're working.
Correct. We have this plan.
We have a plan, so.
Provisionally accredited.
It's only when we stop that plan that they would see an increase.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Well, over in, I remember in 2017, I was at a meeting with Tim Cooksey and, and FEMA had just changed their flood maps.
Yep.
And so it affected, some people were added into the flood plain. I don't recall if any were taken out, but I know over in Four Mile, many of those people were put in, and those flood maps change every few years?
It, well, there really isn't a consistent time. It, yeah, it's pretty consistent on when they, they do update them, yeah.
And so you're talking about the creeks? That's where the significant changes are.
But it, they also affected the river. I mean, they, they just changed their flood maps.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep. So, and that's where, kind of off of, uh, Councilman Manabombs, you know, looking into the future. Again, we talked about, we, we did build in some resiliency and buffer and, and the designs, but I think, I, I, we, at least we think that this new standard, uh, again, which wasn't available to us before, instead of just checking boxes and hitting everything, this is more of a risk-based approach of, of looking at where are the risks in the levy and where should we, where should we spend our money to address those risks? And so I think this is a, a, a good program that the core has put forth to have that risk-based approach, uh, in the system.
Thank you, Steve. So ultimately, the reason why we're really looking at, you know, cost savings is we've had some costs in the overall program since it was originally started. In 2019, there was a budget set at $65.8 million, included all phases A through H, pump station modifications, and all of the work included. Currently, the program costs have increased to about $100.3 million. So we're looking at about a, almost a $35 million increase from 2019 to 2023 on costs and projected costs. You can see phases A, B, and C, original program costs were lower than what they were in 2023 that were either bid or projected, and, uh, phases A, B, and C have all been bid at this point. None of them came in less, all of them came in more. And that's been a challenge we've had been facing with all construction projects recently. Phases C through H, some of them actually go down a little bit once we had more information, but we've had some of them, phase E specifically, is going up $19 million, and D, $8 million. So there's some, some large increases that are identified there.
Can I just ask for the large increase, what, what propelled it to go that much higher?
Well, phase E is the WRA section.
Okay.
And that one there, um, from the initial assessment that was done, there was an, a large sewer line, one of the research, one of the, the lines go from the primary to the secondary treatment is actually built into the levy. That was not identified in the initial assessment, and that creates a whole bunch of challenges there that the real, only real way under the prescriptive way to deal with that is we have to push the levy basically out into the river. So these are based off that prescriptive approach of how do we go through and, and deal with this.
And you wanna remind us where the funding all comes from? How much is?
So there's a couple of funding sources. The Stormwater Utility is primary, um, but then we did receive grant funding from the state several years ago, along with, I believe, eight or nine other communities across the state. And so, uh, we may very well ask if, if there's any opportunity from the state to increase those funding, along with our other city partners across the state, uh, so that it doesn't completely fall on Stormwater.
What did we get?
111 million total between, uh, the city's projects and the WRA section that, that Patrick is talking about.
So there's no federal money?
No, there is no federal money, no.
Even though it's our standards?
Between ours and what he's talking about.
The WRA's portion?
Yeah.
So 70% and 30%, 70% roughly.
Yeah, 70 million is our.
70 million.
Okay, so we've got 100 million on this and an additional 70 million. Know what you're saying?
Nope.
70 million is.
Of, of the 111 million, 70 goes to the city and the balance goes to the WRA. Cause they, the WRA has been also working through this to make improvements at the plant.
Well, around their property, where they exist?
Around their property, also within their property. If something happens, they've actually been taking things like their electrical systems and control rooms and actually building resiliency within the treatment plant. Um, and, and so they've, they've been working through that.
So based on this, what's the shortfall?
Right now, for, between, the shortfall is about 35 million between.
WRA.
35 million of, of where we're at, so.
Of the total, including WRA?
Uh, that would be the total of the city project, so.
Okay. So we got 111 million. Do the math for me.
So the 111 million is actually, is, is the, is the grant money. So, so 70 of that is the city's.
Came out of state sales tax or something like that.
Yep. So 70 of that went to the city, and so then the balance is paid for out of the Stormwater Utility. So, so, so really, we're at, at, the, the original program was, was estimated from phases A through H and the pump stations, it was at 65, we're up to 100, so we're at a $35 million shortfall from our budget, so.
From the budget, from the 70 million?
With, with, that includes the $70 million short, uh, of sales tax.
And so the WRA is getting?
Getting, uh, 30, uh, 41 million.
30 million?
Yep.
Okay.
Of sales tax, yeah.
All right, and that's gonna do G or H?
Nope, uh, the WRA is, is separate improvements. That is specifically around the plant. Uh, that is specifically wastewater treatment plant money. We, we, our project includes, our, our, our project includes G through H, the Southeast Des Moines levy.
Yeah, but E?
Touch.
G or H? Yeah. E is part of this, is, is part of his project.
The levy is, yep. Uh, well, no, E is part of our project, but he's, he's been doing stuff interior.
But it's, yeah, I can, I can clarify. That's where the Stormwater, uh, Treatment Plant, right? That's where the Treatment Plant is, is E.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
I'm Scott Hutchins, I'm the WRA Director and also Assistant Public Works Director. Uh, the WRA projects, the 40 million that roughly we got are, there's a couple of projects. One is, um, uh, standby generators. We built a new standby generator building. We raised, uh, and did a flood wall around our main pump station at the Treatment Plant, and we also were raising, uh, our electrical switch gear that used to be below the flood stage. If the levy overtopped, then that would have been, uh, inundated, so we took that, put it inside a, uh, we, we lowered, or we raised it and put it inside a room, uh, of that new building. And then also, we're doing effluent pumping, which means that if the river is elevated and we still have to get sanitary sewer out, we have to have a pump station to get that out into the river. And, uh, we're actually over, the 40 million that we have, the projects are, are over our estimate as well, and so, uh, we, we have a shortfall in funding as well in our $40 million share too. So, uh, things have escalated in price because of numerous things, uh, during COVID and supply chain and all that kind of things have increased our prices as well. Um, so the work that we have is not related to the levy. We, we were looking at paying for an extra one foot of superiority, but that's part of that SQRA is gonna do, is look to see if that's really necessary out there at the Treatment Plant, so. I hope that clears up a little bit as far as the WRA's projects.
So how much shorter are you?
I don't have that number exactly in front of me, but I think it's.
You have a guess?
Uh, I'd say at least 10 million, cause the pump station, the effluent pump station project is in design right now and it continues to go up in price, so. Things have really escalated since 2018 when we put all this together.
All right, thank you.
We've talked about this a little bit already, but you know, why are the costs increasing? You know, the, one of them we talked about, you know, that overbuild, that half a foot overbuild is one piece of it that was not included in the original estimate. That was something that was identified to, you know, have some of that resiliency for, you know, the more frequent, more intense rainstorms that are coming. Construction costs have increased. I don't, I'm guessing there's probably not one project that's come to City Council for approval that hasn't either gone above what the initial estimate was or gone over the engineer's estimate by sometimes a substantial amount. The, the bidding climate is just kinda crazy right now due to a lot of things, like Scott said, supply chain, labor shortages, there's a lot of big projects going on right now. There was some pent-up demand, and the more big projects there are, the more, you know, competition there is, the less competitive bids we're typically gonna get. And then, but there's also increased costs for remediating, remediating geotechnical issues. So kind of what we talked about, the sand boils, you know, that seepage blankets and those sort of things that are on the backside of the levy, there, there've been a lot of that identified under the prescriptive design process that may be needed on phases D, C, D, and E. So all of those things have really contributed to the raising of the overall cost of the program.
What did the six inches, how much was the additional cost that, that we raised it additional six inches so far? How many millions was that? Yeah, I think it doesn't seem like that much.
It, it, it probably wasn't substant, as much. I think it was more the construction cost increase, and then when we did analyses along C, D, and E, I think those geotechnical improvements were much bigger than anticipated, so we've done.
But the half foot really wasn't as substantial.
Not as, not compared to those, no. And I don't have the exact numbers, but not compared to the geotechnical and just the general cost increase, especially for, like Patrick said, the larger project along the
So moving forward, staff is making the recommendation to pursue the semi-quantitative risk analysis with the core, gain a better understanding of the flood risk and goal of reducing costs without sacrificing any of the safety to the public or property. You know, bringing an agreement tonight for $572,000 to start that process, start the advancing. Start the advancing D through H through design and permitting, you know, after that risk assessment is completed, reanalyzing costs at that point. And then, so a couple of things. One, the current State Flood Mitigation Program Grant was scheduled to be, our project was scheduled to be completed by 2028. We've been in talks with them about should we come in and ask for an extension or modifications to that? And they said they really only want to do it once. So once we have a better understanding of what the overall scope is and what the overall timeframe is, that's when they want us to come back and make a modification there. So even though we're, we're marching towards that, that deadline, they say get a better understanding. So the 12 to 18 months is definitely within that. So that's the point, we have a better understanding of all of it, come back and make a, a modification at that point. Once that's been done, bid phases D through H. And then, once construction is completed, go through the process of completing a letter of map revision through FEMA and then accrediting all of the levers. With that, we'll stand for additional questions.
Did we get any money, uh, from the feds on the Birdland Levy when we had to redo that after 2008?
Patrick and I weren't here then.
I believe we did.
As I recall, we did.
Uh, because we had Senator Harkin and Congressman Boswell, I think, that jumped in and, um, got to say.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Pam Cook, the Assistant City Manager. Yes, the Birdland and Central Place levies were replaced. That all came from 1993. We had a 65, 35 cost share.
And then they picked it up, didn't they get an additional after the blowout on?
That, that was the old levy that had the blowout in 2008.
Right.
Um, and then the, we had additional money just because costs were more than what were originally estimated.
And so they amended it in Congress and we got
Yep, they amended it a couple of different times. So there was the, the Birdland, Central Place, and then there were downtown levy closures that were also done. And there were also studies that were added to look at, could they help us with the rest of the improvements that are part of the phase plan that we have today? And they found that federal money could not be used because we essentially already have levers.
And the cost benefit analysis and all that?
Right, exactly.
I remember.
Yep.
So are we comfortable, all of you, that we have sort of a reasonable understanding now with the FEMA standard and the Corps of Engineers standard that we can move forward? But they are not going to give us any federal funds? Is that where we are?
Correct. The, the decision for council today is, do we want to start using the new standard that the Corps of Engineers has offered as far as looking at a risk-based approach and putting the funds where the most good will?
And we also feel more confident than we have ever in the past that FEMA and the Core are, are now talking among each other on what their two standards are and that they are now aligned.
That's a nice improvement.
Yes, it is. That's a new one.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you. Uh, let's move on and get the Vision Zero update.
So actually, I think Steve's going to start us out on this one as well, before leading into John. Uh, this is another update of what we've, uh, received in questions and answers last several weeks.
All right, I'm a member of the City Council, Steve Neighbors, City Engineer. Uh, again, I'm going to turn it over to John Davis, our City Traffic Engineer, who's, who's spearheaded this effort and, and done a great job getting us to where we are. Uh, he's spent a lot of time with the team, uh, you know, addressing comments that have come in on the plan, uh, working with stakeholders. Uh, I know you just had an actual special Transportation Safety Committee meeting, uh, to, to work through the plan as well. And, and so, uh, so very excited here tonight to, to, for John to present where we are and, and, and looking at approving this plan and, and enacting it. So, all right, that'll turn over to John Davis. John, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name's John Davis, City Traffic Engineer. So as Steve alluded to, we're going to give you an update on the Vision Zero Action Plan as well as the Safe Streets For All Implementation Grant and give you a chance to ask any questions that you might have. Just to review briefly the action plan, the purpose of the plan is to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries by 2040. And through the use of fundamental principles of Vision Zero and the safe systems approach, it'll prioritize improvements based on data and evidence, uh, in the implementation of those strategies. The action plan includes a summary of the public engagement and the crash analysis that has happened so far. It offers a path forward towards a target year of 2040. Specific and measurable focus areas, actions and steps. Project prioritization based on need and safety impact. An annual review of progress towards the goal of zero traffic-related fatalities and serious injuries to affirm, revise, or discontinue action items or steps from the five focus areas. But most importantly, it starts a journey to eliminate traffic deaths and serious injuries on the streets and highways of Des Moines. These are the five focus areas that we have in the plan. Briefly, they will examine policies, programs, processes, and partnerships and implement strategies to enhance those. Deal with, uh, infrastructure design, safe streets, management of speeds, uh, helping to develop a culture of safety and safe street behaviors, as well as to enhance and improve data and transparency. The second draft of the report, uh, and potential action plan items was reviewed and discussed with the public, with yourselves, Transportation Safety Committee, and the Vision Zero Advisory Work Group in late April and early May. From these discussions, it was affirmed that the target year for the action plan would be 2040 and that the city would propose projects for a Safe Streets and Roads For All Grant. From the comments and feedback received, our consultant and city staff developed the final plan that includes revisions to content, focus areas, action items, and implementation step. The final plan was posted on June 15th to the, the city's website. And as Steve alluded to, the Transportation Safety Committee approved the plan last week at their meeting. The adoption of this, of the plan by City Council is on this evening's agenda. On adoption, we'll start working the plan for the action items and implementation steps that are shown in fiscal years 23 and 24. One of those items that is in fiscal year 23 is a submittal of an application for a Safe Streets For All Implementation Grant that is due by July 10th. To briefly review a little bit of the implementation grant, uh, there is, one of the requirements is to have a finalized action plan that meets the SS4A requirements, as well as a council resolution that'll have a target year of 2040 to match the plan. The grant amounts that USDOT anticipates awarding is between 2.5, $25 million. There's an 80/20 cost share between federal and non-federal funds, and projects must be completed within five years. The selection criteria are in the areas of safety impact, equity, engagement, and collaboration, effective practices and strategies to promote systematic, or systemic rather, safety improvements, and other DOT strategic goals. And again, project readiness, the ability to complete projects within five years of obligation of the funds. We're looking at five corridors to include in the grant application. They will total $27 million of construction costs, and we're looking to get $17 million of grant money to help with those projects. These are the projects that we spoke to you about, uh, back in April. They continue by and large the same. We've adjusted their cost estimates slightly since we last met with you, uh, but they're here listed on the screen. And finally, these projects were selected because they fit the SS4A grant selection criteria and considerations. They are located on the high injury network. Their, the required non-federal match for these projects is in the city's CIP already. Preliminary engineering and concept development has already occurred on these projects, and these projects can be completed within the grant required performance period of the five years. With that, I'd be willing to entertain any questions or comments.
Any questions?
I, I just turned in my questions for council tonight and said, I haven't seen the final, the final, uh, concept of it, but it sounds like it's posted out there on the website now. I had, I had not seen the final one. I don't know if others have, but. Did we get a copy of it maybe?
Certainly.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Carl, you got something?
I do. So, John, if we're not awarded the 17 million, would, would one or two of these, um, projects have to be delayed then, or how would you figure it out? These are all great projects, and I, it's terrific they're spread around the, uh, city. But what would be your plan B if, if, if we were not awarded the entire asked amount?
The projects are in the CIP already, uh, for, for the most part, the full amounts. If for some reason USDOT decides to have a lesser amount awarded, or that hopefully is not zero, uh, we would still pursue with these projects. Some aspects of the projects may not be done as we envision them as part of the grant.
Okay, and you expect to hear about the grants by the end of this calendar year?
That's correct. The expectation from USDOT is that the award announcement would be sometime November, December of this year.
Okay.
And then we would likely, uh, have obligated funds roughly about six months later is what we're hearing is the, uh, the timeline right now.
Okay. So, uh, eventually there'll be an additional staff position, um, to, to oversee the Vision Zero?
If, if I could answer that question and actually both, let's make sure we understand that now, moving forward with this plan, knowing where improvements would be most impactful to safety, every year when we do our CIP, we'll have the discussion of, are we matching up with the Vision Iowa, or Vision Zero, uh, concepts? And so this, this will be an ongoing every year discussion, uh, as the CIP is developed. Um, so when, when you ask, if we don't get grants, we, we look at other funding and some things may get slowed down, other things get sped up. That's the normal process. Similarly, uh, on the staff side, uh, that is a request that is being made, and so we will review that, uh, this fall into the winter as we develop the, the, the budget and determine if we're able to add that, that staff.
All right, and so until that staff position's added, how does the Vision Zero keep moving forward until there's additional staff person?
Right, so there are, there's an incredible number of, of actionable items within the plan, most of which is part, is associated with capital improvements. And so those capital improvements will continue to advance based on what Vision Zero is showing us. Uh, the other items, we'll have to figure out as far as the educational piece, uh, if we have partners that are available to help us with those. So what we can do is show you on the operating side, uh, which are able to advance and which are not on an annual basis.
Yeah, would there be a plan to, um, bring in a consultant? Well, now that we're getting close to getting the first Vision Zero, um, dra, or not draft, a final version of the first phase, perhaps that's the correct term, would we have a consultant in to do additional, uh, planning? Um, to, to line up closer to what other communities who, who have been in a Vision Zero plan for five or 10 years where they've brought it back, brought forward more actionable items?
That may be an option. We would look at the data where, what, uh, where that points us in terms of our high injury network, the type of causations of crashes, uh, the strategies in the action plan. We've, uh, actually identified or, or timed it to a certain degree with the anticipation for additional staff in the future, but not in this first, really first year of fiscal year 24. And looking forward to making those requests through the Budget Review Committee process for the future of fiscal year 25 and beyond. But that would be certainly an option depending on the finances as well as, uh, what the particulars are that we're trying to focus on.
Um, in making your budget requests going forward, um, it's evident that other cities do more, uh, kind of, I'll call them smaller projects, but like more crosswalks that are painted with, uh, continental striping and such. Are you moving toward increasing your budget to, um, to, uh, maintain more crosswalks?
That would be part of our request through the BRC process is to increase not only the implementation funds, but more importantly, the long-term operations and maintenance, uh, funding that we need to maintain, uh, whatever, uh, feature or strategy or measure we might, uh, install.
Sure. Well, so, so there are several cities that, um, continental striping is a standard. And, um, we, uh, we're, we're a little short on that in terms of striping on crosswalks. So, I mean, that would be, um, it's paint. I know it's expensive, but it's paint. Are, are there plans to do more of that in the community?
There, there would, there are plans to do that more, but it depends on the funding that we have available and the staff and contracted services to maintain that. We can put them in, but if we can't maintain them, then you, I, in my opinion, you need to question why you put that particular feature in versus other, uh, tools or strategies that you might have available.
All right, so it might be another year before we actually get going on a lot of this because you don't have a, a staff position to oversee this.
I think it's, it's not only the staff position, but also the funding from an operation standpoint.
It's also fair to say that we have several years of actionable items with this plan.
That you're going to move forward with, with or without that?
Should we get the grant?
Right. No, even without the grant, this, this is a vision that shows us over the next several years how to implement safety into our infrastructure.
So even without it, they're going to proceed and begin taking down some of these?
Right. So, so John, are you asking for additional staff or is council asking for additional staff? I'm a little confused of.
At this point in time, I, I, while I won't try to speak for you all, I can speak from, from my standpoint that I intend to ask for additional staff in the upcoming budget cycle.
To implement this?
To implement, uh, elements of this, uh, particularly signs markings, uh, for example, but also the overall coordinator for Vision Zero to help manage the, the various partnerships that we, we have established to some degree, but we want to strengthen and forge so that we can implement it in all corners or all aspects of the plan.
And that's a traffic engineer is what you'll be asking for?
I'm not sure it will necessarily be, uh, one that is someone who's engineering-based, make, someone has, uh, more of a planning background, but definitely they would have experiences in traffic and transportation safety.
I just asked on the projects that we already have, we always say they're in the system. Have they been ranked on the date by the seriousness and the desire to get them done first? So like Maury and Southeast 14th, or I don't know if it's the worst one, but.
Pretty bad.
So the ones we have in is a base, because they're planned out by year, right? They're not going to all be done. So is it based on the rankings now that we know to get us to our Vision Zero so that we can get, I mean, or is that how we've got it in the budget now?
The, the projects that we are putting forward in this, in the, the grant application as well as we've got corridors that are listed in the plan do have a prioritization based on unfortunately their performance when looking at safety and the high injury network. Southeast 14th and Maury has the distinction of being if not the first, the second worst intersection in terms of crash history in the state of Iowa. Not something that we necessarily want to strive for, but that is what we have there. But that is also helps us bring in the support of a key player in that, which is Iowa DOT.
So I'm just wondering if it's ranked based on that, our, what we found for safety? Okay, thank you.
Because that is partially a state highway.
Yeah, and the DOT is going to contribute with this project. To our standards, whatever we decide if we're, they're going to work with us to our standards or is it to their standards? How's that going to work?
It's literally a negotiation, a discussion.
Because I know we've went through stakeholder meetings and we, I mean, we've, we've, we've went through a planning process with the state. Now, does this going to change what improvements they're planning and what they're budgeting for? Or how's that going to work?
Oh, yeah, Councilman McGowan is correct. Yeah, this stemmed from a corridor study and there was public meetings and obviously we, you know, understandably so, we had neighborhood folks reach out and were very passionate about this, this intersection. So no, this would actually be implementing that planning effort as well. And so, and so like Councilman Boss said, these projects are very critical. Unfortunately, they are on the high injury network. Unfortunately, some of them are, are some of the higher ranked ones in the state in terms of performance from a crash history. And so, so I, I do want to thank and I appreciate we, with the grant funding, we have received awesome response from our, our partners. We've got a lot of neighborhood associations who've written letters to support these. We've got partners like the Street Collective Advocacy Group here in town. And, and we've got partners like Drake University. We've got folks like Invest DSM. So these projects do touch a lot of areas in our neighborhoods and throughout our city. They go right through the heart of some of our neighborhoods and even through some of our commercial nodes. So it was, I do want to thank publicly the support that we've got for, for these because that's all going to be included in the, the submittal to, for, for the grant. And so, and I also want to thank you all. I know we, we spent a lot of time on these projects from public meetings, developing them as well as this whole Vision Zero effort. It's taken a lot of time and effort to plan all this and, and get to where we are.
But when you go back a couple of slides to all the projects, I mean, a lot of those are state highways.
Yep, and so actually.
There's three out of the five.
And I apologize, I do want to clarify, so the state is going to contribute to both the money on, on US 69 and on Highway 6. They're also going to contribute to.
The Douglas and Euclid.
Yep, specifically Euclid, yep. And then Douglas, they helped implement the pilot. So, so they would not be involved in the Douglas piece, but they will, they were involved in the pilot project. And they will contribute toward, toward the Euclid effort in Highland Park.
Okay.
But as far as the planning, we can incorporate our Vision Zero. They will go along with what we're asking if there's difference to what their standard is versus what our standard is?
We, we've already worked out the concepts and the, so they, yep. Now, we'll still have to follow their process in terms of, of how we, because their, their money is involved and how we bid the project and do the.
But we get to implement the items that we feel are important.
Yep, but the, the safety aspects, yep, we're doing those aspects.
That's why I wanted to make sure that we were able to do that.
Yep.
Steve, I just have to say thank you very much. We have two new Hawklights at East 17th and University.
And kudos to you and your staff for, for a great campaign to get the, the neighborhood associations on board. So thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, it is, it's, it's personal, it's touching. I think we unfortunately can think back on these corridors of, of some crashes that have happened. And, and so it's, it is, is definitely touching and appreciative of the support letters that we get. It was awesome to see the reaction, how quickly people helped us in response, you know, like Drake and Street Collective and Neighborhoods.
And now sometime after you get your applications done, if you want to share PDFs of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, thanks. Yep, actually, and we're going to, we're, and we're going to include every one of them in our application submittal. Every single one of these letters that folks have submitted, that's, that's why it's so important.
All right, thank you both. Appreciate it very much and let's keep moving on safe streets. Our Vision Zero Plan. This manager, I know that we've got a, a video that we're going to review here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. I had a few, just a few questions about fireworks. And so we have put together a press release that talks about the constraints with which local governments have in controlling and restricting the use and even the sale of fireworks. And so there is a written press release that will accompany this video, which is being put out. And I asked the chief to be here briefly and introduce and actually be available for questions as well on the enforcement side. So we're trying to capture the entirety of fireworks through the sales and then the misuse of fireworks and what that enforcement looks like.
Scott, I just have to say, I'm having, I see fireworks sales in church parking lots.
Everywhere.
In, in every street corner and Hy-Vee at East 25th and Euclid has a sign that says, "Do not discharge fireworks within 300 feet." And I'm thinking, 300 feet, they're not legal.
Yeah.
For anybody to discharge.
Within city limits in Des Moines, yes.
Make them tough when you can sell them anywhere on any commercial property.
That's exactly right.
Powerful mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council, Dana Winger, Chief of Police. With Independence Day fast approaching, the city PIO office has put together a PSA. Within this video, you'll hear from the police department that'll talk a little bit about the fireworks ordinance and the prohibition. I'll also talk about some of the effects fireworks have like on our veterans, people with sensitivities where it may cause fear and anxiety, pets. You'll also hear from the fire department. The fire department will be talking about some of the hazards and dangers, including personal injury and unintentional fires. You'll also hear from the parks department, talking about some of the damages and the cost to taxpayers. In years past, they've spent thousands of dollars replacing equipment, fixing facilities, staff time doing cleanup in our city parks. What we're asking for in this video basically is compliance. Be considerate of your neighbors, be respectful of other people's property. Your police department and your fire department are gearing up and staffing up for essentially a four-day weekend. There are a lot of events throughout our city. History tells us that we're going to be busy. We ask for the public to partner with us by complying with this ordinance to meet those basic public safety needs. And we encourage our community to get out there and enjoy those professionally done sanctioned fireworks displays within our community and throughout central Iowa. So with that, we'll play the video. Yeah, your police department, your fire department will be stretched thin over this, over this holiday weekend. That's just kind of the nature of the beast and the business we're in. So our calls for service will definitely increase with both departments. So any ancillary things like the, the accidents, the unintentional fires, the disputes that could arise from, you know, within the neighborhoods, those put a strain on the resources. So we will, we'll do our best. We will struggle to keep, keep up with the basic public safety needs. That's why compliance with this ordinance is so important. So the majority of our calls on fireworks are going to come in what we call crime alert, which is going to be an anonymous call. And those are a lower priority, you know, as we address other needs, maybe a serious accident, a domestic bite, things like that. So it's a lower priority and the officers will respond to those as time allows. If there is a dispute involved, a medical emergency, a fire emergency, those become a higher priority. So with a high call volume, just normally the course of business, a weekend, a holiday weekend, some of those could take several minutes to even hours to get to those crime alerts. But the ones that have a dispute or some other emergency, those will get moved up the list.
So to write a citation, is this video going to tell our residents for you and your officers to write a citation to someone? Will it explain to them, someone has to see it, someone has to be a victim or how?
Somebody has to be willing to report it.
Will this video tell that or am I jumping ahead a little bit?
Well, no, actually the written PSA covers that, covers that information, what we need. What we need is a cooperating witness so we can identify who the suspect is in order to issue that citation and then eventually prosecute it. But is it, it is a significant fine, $625. By the time you tack on court costs and surcharges and administrative fees, you're upwards of $900. Our goal is, is not to write a high volume of tickets. Our goal is to get compliance from the public.
I just want to thank Scott, our city manager and the chief in the fire. Once I started seeing everything pop up, I'm sure others requested that we do something like this to inform the public because everybody says, why don't you do more? And I keep saying, you're not supposed to be shooting them off at all. And I'm concerned too, when you go into our establishments that are popped up everywhere and you ask, is it legal in Des Moines? Most of them have told me, I don't know. Or go buy some that are less, less in size so you don't get caught, I guess. So I don't know what we can do. I don't know if legally if they're selling in Des Moines, you can say they have to post the.
I thought that was part of our code. I thought that was part of some code that they need to.
Okay. Just curious from a legal standpoint.
I thought that was part of the code.
If we do get called to your house and we respond and we get the evidence.
They're supposed to know, you can't shoot them off in Des Moines. You can shoot them off Ankeny, Altuna, Grimes, but you can't shoot them here. I, I thought that's, was supposed to be posted somewhere in all these tents.
Apparently Hy-Vee thinks you just have to go 300 feet.
It's, it's supposed to be posted per our code, but the federal district court has ruled that zoning regulations are enforceable. Anything related to the consumer end of things, any that the city's adopted are not enforceable. We've left it in the, the code with the hope that some of the establishments will still put it up. But we can't, we can't make them do it.
Well, there, that, that clarifies some of the confusion that I think that our residents and folks buying them and folks working at these establishments.
But that's another reason this PSA is important. I think it's confusing to some members of the public where you can essentially buy them on every street corner or every commercial parking lot, but you're not allowed to shoot them within the city. That's why, that's why this was put together. City of Des Moines. If we do get called to your house and we respond and we get the evidence that we need and the, the participation from the complaint and you're going to get a citation that probably costs you over $600, that's a pretty heavy hit.
Fireworks are illegal for, to ignite anywhere inside city of Des Moines limits, but, but especially our parks and, and public spaces. The use of fireworks is just a, an added safety concern in any general public area.
It's a big challenge to be safe with fireworks and that's one of the reasons why they're prohibited in the city of Des Moines. Fireworks need a lot of space. Just last year, we had a significant fire where firework debris landed on somebody's roof and started their house on fire. We're trying to avoid that and that's why fireworks are prohibited in the city. So we really encourage you to come out to some of our public displays of fireworks that are going to happen as we celebrate our nation's independence.
We have 77 parks inside city of Des Moines and roughly a third of those received damage from fireworks last year during the Fourth of July. It, it takes some time to get that infrastructure repaired. There is a real cost as far as staff time that is dedicated to an unplanned activity. And then also costly repairs and painting and replacement of infrastructure that, that was not anticipated for.
I think the one thing that we try to get out every year is that we just want you to be a good neighbor. You know, try and take into consideration the fact that you've got neighbors who have pets and it's very disturbing to them to hear those fireworks. You've got neighbors who may have PTSD from, you know, service time in the military or some other experience where those loud noises and those explosions are going to cause them a lot of distress. There are a variety of public fireworks displays that are going to be available this year, whether it's the I Cubs or some of the other neighboring communities. Check those out. It looks like we're going to have the weather that's good for that. It's always an awesome time to take your family out there and that's what we would recommend everybody do.
We want everybody to enjoy a safe, happy, healthy Fourth of July celebration. Take advantage of some of the activities that are going around the city and, and be safe. Be careful with your grills and your cooking fires. Make sure they're appropriately put out when you're done cooking.
This Fourth of July, please come out and enjoy one of our 77 parks responsibly and, and be respectful for all of our park users and, and please do not use fireworks in our park system.
Happy Fourth of July, Des Moines.
Happy Fourth of July.
Can we get that so we can put it on our social media sites?
Thank you, thank you for putting it together.
So does, we're, we're kind of dry this year. Is that going to increase the exposure to?
Fires now?
Fires? I don't know if there's anyone from the fire department in the, the audience, but.
I know that's, that's always a big concern for our fire department. It puts them on heightened alert and we have been uncharacteristically dry here in the city of Des Moines. I know there's, you know, a chance for some rain later in the week, but that's not, that's not going to solve the issue. So, yeah, I know our, our fire department is certainly concerned with that as well.
So we already had the one gentleman that I think was on KCCI that his bush totally ignited. So if it had been even closer to his house.
At 2:30 in the morning.
It was just a bomb, it was a bomb rocket. It wasn't even a big one, I don't think. So it is a very dangerous thing to have.
Well, will we have additional staff in the parks to?
There's actually a, kind of a renewed interest in the parks after what happened last year. Like I said, there was thousands of dollars in damage. I met with Director Ben Page and his team about that. We will have a focus from the police department side and also he'll have some staff also keeping an eye on the parks and controlling the parks throughout the, the day and evening hours.
Until 2:30 in the morning?
That's unfortunately, unfortunately, that's what it's come to. You know, it, it requires a lot of resources, additional staff time on, you know, we're open 24/7. The parks department is not, but they feel this is important enough where they're going to have some staff on duty as well.
But I know, I think it was said, this will be in the written material, but when we get constituents who, I mean, I get the occasional person who, my neighbor's doing this. I want them to stop and enforce. I'm willing to work with you on it. What, what should we tell them to, to help them enforce, even if they want something even after the fact? Like what kind of documentation should we be recommending they get if they want to, to help us enforce this?
Yeah, if we have someone that wants to be a cooperating witness, we certainly don't want them to put themselves in harm's way and cause a dispute with their neighbor. But if they could, if they could get some video for us, even if it doesn't happen that night, if they call us later, we can follow up on that. We'll use our neighborhood-based service delivery team. They can go out, meet with that witness, gather any evidence they have and we can follow up, follow up with a citation later. So it doesn't necessarily need to happen that night. You know, if it's, if it's not practical, if the calls for service don't allow or it's not convenient for that cooperating witness, but if they give us a call, we'll follow up on those, you know, the next day, the next week, whenever it's convenient for them.
But you have to see the person light the fireworks, correct? Am I correct?
We need, we, possession of fireworks is not illegal. We need, we need to know who the individual was. individual was that actually set off the fireworks, correct?
Which is hard to do at night. So.
Yeah, it's difficult, but we've had some success in the past. So just those cooperating witnesses, we'll do it when it's convenient for them.
Midnight at night, could they be arrested for trespassing?
There's a park curfew violation that we could use. There's a lot of different ordinances at our disposal for that, but with the partnership with the parks department this year, we should be able to address a lot of those, a lot of those kinds of issues as well. There are going to be another set of eyes and ears for us out there.
And could we just get particularly, I mean, let's measure how we're doing on this, particularly with the park damage. I mean, we had 22 parks and thousands of dollars of damage. So hopefully, hopefully we have something in place so that this year we'll be able to take a look in, you know, a month from now and say that there was significantly less damage to our park system because we've, we've taken steps to enforce and mitigate that.
I'd love to, we definitely will report the activities, but understand that this year, the sheer sales of fireworks is far larger than we've ever seen. So we just know there are more fireworks in people's homes today than there was last year.
So maybe, maybe it would be, maybe you can look at some of the other communities that have legally allowed at certain time limits of when they're allowing their residents to shoot off these fireworks, if they're having the same issues of the month-long of shooting things off or, or damages to public parks or, or things like that. If they're feeling the same, same things that we're feeling at our community where we've just said, "We're not doing it. We're not allowing them." Because as you said, they are at every single corner. They would not be at every single corner if people aren't buying them. That means people are buying them and they're going to shoot them off. And I don't know a lot of people that are going to go out to a farm or a different community that allows them. They're going to do that in their home. So we need to figure out how, how to make it work because we're stuck now that they're able to sell them everywhere.
So we can definitely scan the other communities.
It would be nice just to know.
I did talk to one, another city council person. They've always started hearing them. So I don't think it's limited just...
Probably not.
So I don't know what the degree is if they have as much, but...
They're annoying, and people that aren't good neighbors that are doing it in the middle of the night are ridiculous.
Or every night.
Or every night is true.
I remember last night about midnight, I think.
But it puts, you guys have lots of calls. Lots of people are out. Lots of people are taking in adult beverages and other, and other things that you're going to have many, many calls, including, including if anyone listens to a scanner on the Fourth of July. It is bizarre how many calls they get, and it's not just fireworks. So I would encourage all of you, they have an app on your radio. It's called 5O Radio. Turn it on during the Fourth of July, and you'll see how many calls they're getting because it's crazy.
Well, I think though, too, part of this is to alert the people in Des Moines. If you're going to call, be prepared that just a call isn't going to be enough. So to divert some of the calls so that they don't get as many calls if they understand the rules because people say, "Why do you allow it?" Well, we don't, but, so I think to try to explain is the most important part of, hopefully we're going to divert some of the calls that you have gotten in the past. Not saying it will happen, but the goal would be that we'd at least mitigate some of those calls.
Yeah. Compliance with the ordinance go a long way towards relieving a lot of the stress on police and fire on what's historically one of our busiest weekends.
And as everybody I think has already noted, it's already started. I pulled into a C-store to do a little business, and as I was putting a little Petro in my tank, I noticed about three, four blocks on further down the street, the whole time I was filling my gas tank, I watched a great display of fireworks that was way above those treetops and bombs bursting in red.
Yeah, we, we watched a not-so-great display last week. Police and fire responded to a garage fire that had a cache of fireworks stored in it, presumably for Independence Day, that unfortunately went up in flames, and the display was not quite as intended.
Yeah. Well, thank you and appreciate putting that together, and hopefully our citizens will get a chance to see it. And I think that a lot of our council is going to try to share it on their own social media sites.
Perfect.
I think it's good. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
And let's hope that some people start hearing that we're concerned. Thank you all for attending this morning. Prior to dismissal, heads up everybody, we've got a closed session at 3:45 today here. Okay? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.